Okay, we'll open up the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union. Board of Directors meeting Monday, December fourteenth, six P M or six oh two, I guess. Richard does probably not have a view of everyone here. So if we could introduce ourselves. We have Super Donico King, myself, Dick France, and Ray, go ahead.
Ray Molino, North Bennington.
Leon Johnson.
Scott Schatsbury.
I see Nicole.
Hi, Nicole Whalen from Arlington.
Bill Basic. Laura Boudreaux. Kate Abbott. Melissa Senical. Megan Meskot. We have, it looks like Frank Barnes came on, Cat TV is there. Jackie.
Yes.
Is trying to connect. And Nick Gault. I think we got everybody there. First item on the agenda is public comments. I don't see anybody who would fit that bill. So we'll move on to item two, finance. And we have an internal financial control document. That Renee might be able to explain.
Um, yes, I can, um, but actually I'm just looking. We would need six board members to have a quorum, right? And I think we only have five. If I'm counting correctly.
One, two, three, four, three, five. You have. Oh, so Jackie's not a, you have Dick. Scott, Ray. Nicole, Leon.
Jackie.
Jackie's not.
Jackie's not, yeah, that's where I counted, yeah, Jackie's a MAU member. So if you're right, that I counted six board members, but there's not six S U board members.
What we're looking for now.
So we can wait a few minutes and see what's gonna happen. I would think most of us would be on by now.
I know Celeste said that she wasn't gonna be able to make it. Um, not sure about Tayla, Ron, Fran. Uh, Matt.
I have no emails from anyone other than. Saying that they weren't gonna attend, so. Wait a minute, let's see.
Without a quorum, we don't have the ability to move forward, do we?
That's. You won't be able to make any decisions that as a board in terms of voting on something, that's all.
Presentation could still take place, couldn't it?
I would think Renee could still do a budget presentation. You just can't take any action on it.
Well, then we, um. We, uh, we might not bother with the internal financial control document unless there's enough information there. Um, the contract renewal for transportation. Uh, we won't be able to vote on, but the budget review, item two C. Um, we can go forth with. How's that sound, Renee?
Okay. Um, just for bandwidth purposes, I'm gonna shut my video off, but I will start my screen share.
I'll keep watching participants to see if we get somebody.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, can everybody see that okay? I'm kind of trying to do a split screen so we can be looking at. The budget kind of side by side with the narrative. Typically how we've done this in the past is I would just have the budget up on the screen and I'd be giving you folks handouts. Um, to have right in front of you, but of course we didn't have the opportunity to meet in person, so. Um, they emailed all this out this afternoon once we had it together. Um, just to give you a little, uh, background, um. Myself, uh, Mr. Colkeen, Mr. Basic, um, Bob Mason, who is the business manager for. Um, B V S U Arlington and Sandgate now, um, and Nick have had a few meetings over the past. Um, several months trying to come up with a plan as to how we were going to approach. Um, Arlington and Sandgate coming into the S B S U. Um, so Bill was kind enough to take a look at what. He felt the remaining pieces of the Baton Hill Valley Supervisory Union budget would would be. Um, so he provided that and I've incorporated that into, um, the existing format that we've been using. Here, um, for Southwest. Um, our proposal is to provide. Another year of transition, so we would like to. Um, the board to consider keeping on Superintendent Basic and his support staff. Um, for another, another year, again, to provide some additional, um. Transition time. So a- as we go through this, you know, kind of keep that in the back of your mind. We are, you know, pulling special education, um, from the existing B V S U into the S U. Along with, um, you know, operations and personnel. Another thing you're gonna see throughout the presentation, um. Is that we were working on implementing the new uniform chart of accounts, which is a mandate from. Um, the state. And so there are some new functions that we'll see that we're still trying to rework. Um, the budget and parse out. Um, items that we've had in certain categories that we're now migrating over, um, to different categories. That's just a common theme we'll we'll see throughout. Oh, and it looks like Tayla's trying to get in. Jim, were you able to admit her?
Looking, I gotta go back, I gotta.
Hi, daughter, I flipped her.
Okay, I had to exit the full screen, you had stolen the screen on me, so.
Sorry. There is a way, a- a- and for those of you who are trying to do a couple of things at the same time, you can, you can exit full screen mode, but still. You know, have it somewhat large on your screen.
Go over the top and get view options and then you can do that, but Laura was quicker, a quicker clicker than me.
Okay, so, um. That being said, um, the first way that, um, I've been presenting the budgets is by category. So essentially I've taken the.
Did Taylor say she's here though, is she, is she here?
I'm here.
Renee?
Yes, I hear her.
I'm here.
Yeah. You can hear us, alright, because I just wanted Richard to ma- make sure Richard recorded that. So you now have a quorum, so I guess this is now the, a public meeting, right? Just want to acknowledge that.
Dick, do you wanna back up on the agenda, do you wanna circle back to those other items requiring action?
How about if we continue with your explanation, we can circle back, um. Later, because these may be items enclosed in what you're gonna talk about anyway.
Okay.
It's one, Richard, it's six eleven and we have a quorum.
Okay, so I think my screen is back up for everybody to see. Alright, so, um, the salary category, and I'm down here, I have the narrative to kind of, um. Follow along, and this is just to provide some, some highlights. Um, again, as we have in the past couple of years, as we're reviewing this, we don't actually have, um, negotiated. Uh, contracts with either of our unions, and I believe that the, um, unions up in Arlington are also under negotiations for F Y twenty-two as well. So that's an unknown. Um, we're basically taking a look at this and factoring in a possible scenario. Um, so just kind of keep that in in mind as well. Now you'll notice the first line here, a salary increase overall of only just shy of twenty thousand dollars. Well, that's because, uh, we have had a proposal. From special education to reduce. Um, some vacant positions that we have this year. And, um, Dr. Abbott's feeling that we can sustain. Um, the services needed for students without these positions, so it's allowing us to make some. Um, some reductions without actually, um, having to go through any riffs. So we're seeing a reduction of three special education teachers, again, these are vacant positions. And five paraprofessionals. Um, which are also vacant positions as well. Um, we've pulled in, um, the staff from Baton Hill, which includes their special education staff. Um, bus drivers, and then again, as I said before, um, interim assistant superintendent, um, with support staff. Uh, the benefits line, um, is always a fun one for us to look at because V high and the health insurance premiums. As with every year, we see significant increases to those premiums, so. Um, this year is no different. However, we do have the factoring of the statewide negotiation, so now. We are only looking at funding the levels of the gold C D H P premium, along with the silver C D H P premiums. Our administration, our, um, teachers, um, professional level staff. All contribute twenty percent already towards those premiums. In F Y twenty-two, what we'll see is our support staff, who were previously contributing, actually currently are contributing eighty-six percent. Will have a migration to, um. I'm sorry, it's the employer is actually contributing eighty, eighty-six. Um, we'll see that drop to eighty-four. As of July one of twenty twenty-two, nope, January one of twenty twenty-two. So essentially the way that I'm budgeting this is a split, I'm, I've got it in there at eighty-five percent to split the difference. The other thing that you may remember last year, we kind of grappled with a little bit, is at least for, um. The schools that we had down here, our collective bargaining, um, did not provide for. Um, uh, support staff to have any level of coverage, um, with a. A contribution coming from the employer beyond an employee only plan. So we ran some. Uh, some projections last year and, yeah, the board really struggled. Um, with coming up with, you know, the what-if scenario, so we, we landed on a number. Um, we've actually had open enrollment, so we know what those changes are gonna be. And out of the give or take a hundred and sixty-five, um, school year support personnel, only had about a dozen actually elevate their level. Of insurance, um, to something beyond, uh, the employee only plan. So that's why you're seeing a, a reduction there, because I was actually able to go in. And pull out those placeholders that we had put in as kind of our, you know, worst case scenarios. Um, for the change that we were seeing.
Could I help you for a minute?
Sure.
Um, given the current situation with COVID, where, uh, a number of people might be unemployed. Laid off, whatever condition applies to them. Um, you're still confident that in, in your reduction on that. Area, I, I, it occurs to me that maybe people without jobs would now need coverage that they didn't have before.
Um, I, I did reach out to our payroll and benefits manager to see, you know, her, her level of. Um, comfort and confidence in being able to connect with our support staff and trying to reach out to all of them. Um, she said she was, I wanna say ninety-seven, ninety-nine percent. Able to do that, so she was feeling very confident in the numbers that we, we have.
Thank you.
Sure. We do have some, some adjustments for the, um, out of pocket. Um, maxes too, just based on the statewide health plan, so I've made those adjustments, um, in, in this budget as well. Uh, we're not going to see any increase in dental, they're holding those rates constant. Um, but one increase that we're, um, we're certain of. Is, uh, the Vermont Municipal Employees Retirement System will be increasing by another quarter of a percent for next year. Um, and if I may just, a point, um, the V high rates that I have listed here on the screen, these are just, um, what have been proposed. Uh, the, to the Department of, um. Finance, D F R, Financial Regulation, I believe. Um. V high feels pretty confident in these numbers that they will be approved, but we don't anticipate. Any approval until a- at least January. So I've gone with, you know, the numbers that they've provided. Um, it, it is possible that, you know, D F R could kick back and make them change these numbers. A bit, but I would hope that they wouldn't be going, um, in the upward direction, if anything, maybe, maybe downward, but. Um, that's the best information we have today. So moving on to the next couple of categories.
Renee, could I go back to item number one again, the salaries? That, despite it being a deep, a slight increase, only twenty thousand. You've incorporated, uh, how many people from B V S U? The, into this?
Bill might have to weigh in actually with the. Actual numbers, and, and there have been some migrations of his staff from the S U level. Um, to the Arlington School District.
Yep, okay. So they're not in this budget because of that migration. And then you have the, the, uh, number of personnel you mentioned. Who were being reduced because they're in empty positions and we're just not gonna fill them.
Correct.
Okay, um, thank you.
Right, I can, or, um, uh, not sure who was speaking there.
Ray.
Hi, Ray, how's it going? I can, um, give you that information in a second here exactly, if I can pull that up, but I think it's around twenty-five, twenty-seven employees.
That from B V S U that are in that salary line that we're looking at, okay?
Yeah, and Ray, just so you know, like, I, I've taken. Not just their proposed budget for twenty-two, but I've also taken in their historical data too, so these figures. That you're seeing, if you were to go back to last year, they're all gonna look different, because it's not just the Southwest Vermont S U numbers. It's got B V S U's actual for eighteen, actual for nineteen.
The actuals, every number category on this screen is a combined number now.
Correct.
So it doesn't compare to last year's numbers.
Correct, yes.
I, I think that's a good thing to point out from the beginning, from the get-go. It wasn't all that clear to me, just looking at it. Because it says S D S U, which is now a work in progress. To a different state, yeah.
Ray, that's thirty-four employees.
Thirty-four, okay. Thank you.
And Bill, the, some, some of which are actually grant funded though, right?
Some are grant funded, some are part-time as well, so it's, it's, you know, we have O T people and such.
Yeah.
Part-time, actual people, um, not physicians.
I, I figure it'd be useful to, uh, have those numbers. As a side, you know, in, in the narrative perhaps, I'm not sure. Where they would, where they would fit in this presentation. But, uh, it's always been a, uh. Uh, when people have asked how many employees we have, it's always been a difficult number to come up with. In the S D S U, and now it's even more difficult, because there's, uh, your lot from, um, B V S U. Thank you.
Uh, so the, the third line down, uh, contracted services, you can see this is a, um, significant. Shift here, um, for F Y twenty-two. And, um, a lot of this has to do with special education services. Um, instruction, clinicians, vision services, et cetera, so we're all, um, Dr. Abbott can, can speak to this as well. You know, looking at our students, looking at our incoming students and their needs. Um, one of the biggest increases that we're seeing is the potential need for a secondary, um, NEC classroom. So NEC is the New England Center for Children. And these are affiliate classrooms who are, um, essentially staffed with an educator. From the New England Center for Children, and then we provide. Um, one-on-one para support for the students in those classrooms, so adding a classroom. Is about a hundred and eighty-five to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars of what you're seeing there, plus. We have three existing classrooms at the elementary level. So each of those carries that price tag. We have one at the middle school now, the potential for a second one at the middle school for next year, and then we also have one at the high school. Um. In addition there, we have, um. The need for some evaluations, uh, we factored into the budget as well. Um, knowing that the status of, you know, the mental health of a lot of our, our students. Uh, we wanna make sure that we're providing the services that, that they need. Um, so we factored that in as well. And then, um, Ray, we did look at, um, the North Bennington students. So we have factored that in, and it is an increase for North Bennington based on the existing student population you have. Um, and then some incoming students as well. Um, probably something that we would, would wanna take a look at in executive session, just given, um, the student count, so it's not identifiable. Um, but if it is something that you wanted to dive deeper into, we can certainly do that. Um, also a small increase for, um, some translation services, um, for some of our, our literature that we have. And making sure that those are available, um, in other languages for our families. And then, uh, a small increase for trainings and professional learnings for administration.
Does that include, uh, equity training?
Yes, it does. Yeah, and that's mainly what we had in mind when we were, um, thinking about that. So the operations category, the next one down there, um, kind of encompasses, as you can see in the narrative, everything from our utilities, repairs, maintenance. Leases, rent, and then we kind of get into, you know, operational type, um, with, you know, printing, advertising, our telephone services. Um, online software, it's kind of all encompassing of basically what it takes to keep things running. Um, for the S U. Not a lot of changes there, we do, um, anticipate some utility and service cost increases, while others were actually saying some savings. So overall, um, a small reduction to that budget category. Um, now moving down to transportation, uh, one of the items that was on the agenda tonight. Um, is consideration of the board for a contract extension with due for. Um, the NEP index was released, uh, uh, back in mid-November. Um, the New England. Oh, have it on the memo, just see if I can pull it up. Pop that in there, but the. New England Economic Project Cumulative Price Index, so by statute. If we were, we are allowed to renew contracts as long as they don't exceed that index. Um, the index was released by the Agency of Education at two, at a two-point-six percent increase. Um, I took that back to due for and asked if they would consider extending the contract for one more year at or below that increase. Um, and he has agreed, so we would just need the board to consider that this evening. But I have carried that, um, in the budget that you, we have before you today.
It's my recommendation after discussing with Renee, that you would consider the one-year extension. When we still unfold what happens with transportation with Arlington and Sandgate a year from now.
So this does not include any, uh, bus issues with Arlington or Sandgate for this year?
Uh, Bill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the equipment that it themselves, the buses are, are owned by Arlington, and it's just the. The employees, the bus drivers themselves are actually S U employees.
Uh, you are correct.
So if, if I could, uh. Beat a dead horse here, um. The issue we had, uh, with panel. Will replicate itself with Arlington and Sandgate eventually, will it?
Certainly will come up for discussion, uh, with, Bill and I have had some discussions. Um, you know, one of the things that Bill reminded me of is that there is a different Secretary of Education now who may. Make a different determination, uh, because in my simple way of thinking, I would thought we would. Uh, a year from now, we would go out and rebid, um, our bus contract that would include then the routes in Arlington. And Sandgate, but, uh. That doesn't, I, I don't know if the state will enforce it the way that it did in panel, but you're absolutely right, Dick, that it will, um, certainly. The panel, um, members of the issue board, um. May not be pleased with that decision, because they were forced to sell their buses.
Thank you.
So the next line down, uh, we have is tuition, line number six. Um, you're seeing a significant decrease to this line, um, and that is mainly due to, um, students. Uh, that were able to actually accommodate in our, um, current settings within our schools now, so. Um, we're going, basically expecting a reduction. In the residential and day placement that we had, um, previously budgeted in F Y twenty-one. There is a, um, the annual increase to pre-K tuition, which we have factored in, but it's small enough clearly that it's not, um. We're not seeing an increase to that tuition line. Supplies for the most part, um, have been level funded, you know, minor adjustments here and there. And by supplies, that kind of is encompassing, you know, anything from, you know, your general supplies and books. Um. Computer equipment, which, you know, sometimes we would think of a laptop as being equipment, but when you look at the definition of. Um, our, our policy on fixed assets. Anything to be capitalized or would be considered equipment actually has to have a value. In excess of five thousand dollars, or if we were to be purchasing in bulk, um, it would be in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars. So when we buy, you know, two or three laptops here, or a couple of iPads there, we end up actually getting, uh, recorded as supplies, believe it or not. Um, and as well as some of our, uh, you know, licenses that we use for, um, say Lexia, um. And, um, Go Guardian, things of that nature, you know, they, they don't meet the capitalization threshold, so they end up being considered quote-unquote supplies. Did somebody have a question, I thought I heard a?
Well, I, I, uh, understood there were quite a number of laptops that, uh, hadn't been returned for update and. And, uh, there were, I don't know how many that had to be purchased for, um, remote learning, and I. Guess I'm surprised that it's only. Uh, 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 such a small percentage increase, I guess.
Yeah, so we, um, thankfully, we actually were just received our award for C R F funding last week, which is the Corona Relief Fund. So it's one portion of the CARES Act money. Um, with that funding, uh, we were actually able to purchase another thirteen hundred Chromebooks, so. That is, um, rolling through those federal funds. And then we actually have another large order already, um, in place for more Chromebooks. Um, some laptops and actually some iPads, so we're able to, um, use these federal funds to assist us in this emergency need right now. Because we need, you know, to get these goods in the, in the hands of our students who are, you know, either hybrid learning or at-home remote learning. So thankfully, um, we have been able to, to put that federal funding to good use.
So Renee, on purchases of, of. This, these computer. Pieces of cu- computer equipment that you were using for. Online learning, um. Are these, um. These are not strictly S U services, right? I mean that they're for students, whether they're, uh, special ed or, uh. Uh, you know, what do I want to say? Yeah, uh, whether they're, they're special ed students or not, right? It's general purchase by the S U for all students.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes, yes.
And this normally, would, would that be part of our budget normally? And this normally, would would that be part of our budget normally?
Um it could be at this level, but typically what we've seen in the past is that we it we're phasing through equipment, so we tend to have rolling leases. And those leases, we usually end up having at the local districts. So we had actually planned this current year for a significant Chromebook purchase for Mount Anthony. So as such, we actually had that budgeted, so we're not actually using federal funds for the Mount Anthony Chromebooks because we had had our already planned that and didn't wanna be um, you know, crossing the line of supplanting. So the the purchase was planned there. We had not planned the thirteen hundred for the elementary students.
Okay.
But we found the the significant need, so therefore, um yes, we use the CRF money for that.
But the CRF money is paying for those thirteen hundred entirely, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And we'll, so we'll see a significant offset on equipment when we look at the uh revenue side of the budget?
Um, that's actually.
Not distinguished that way?
No, you won't see it because it's actually happening in this current year.
Okay.
Um, okay, so coming back here, um the equipment line, I should probably change the label on that because it's not just equipment, you know, as I mentioned, oops, before. Um it's anything that meets that threshold for capitalization. So believe it or not, we do have some software licenses um that that actually are in excess of five thousand dollars. For instance, um Infinite Campus or our software that we use to develop our bus routes. Um those would actually fall into this category of um number eight, equipment. And I do have it labeled on the narrative as equipment and capitalized software, but I didn't actually um get that changed um on the spreadsheet itself. And then the last item there is dues and fees. Again, um for this one, it's mostly level funded. We do anticipate, as we've seen um over the past several years, um the V S B A increases. Um you know, the membership dues annually, but that's being offset by a reduction in the section one twenty-five plan administration fee that BBSU currently had on its own. But since they're coming under our SU, um they wouldn't have to carry that cost anymore. So when we get down to the bottom line, um again, this being blended, all of these figures here. So the actuals for the previous three years, um the current year's budget, and then the proposed for next year. These are all blended between um what was just the Southwest Vermont SU and the remaining um lines for BBSU rolled all into one. Um Baton Kill Valley is actually coming in um with just their pieces and about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar reduction. Um and that's being offset by, again, what was previously just the Southwest um of about a three hundred and forty thousand dollar increase. So the net of that you're saying is just shy of a hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase or about point five seven percent over the current year's budget. So before I jump into the next one, yep, I'm open up for questions?
Yeah, you're killing me here. We never, we never get a uh point five seven percent increase. What am I missing here?
You know, Kate, I have to tell you that Dr. Abbott has worked really hard in in looking at um, you know, the special education. And, you know, it it's it's been a difficult process, but she she feels comfortable in, you know, the student counts and the positions that we've had vacant, um that they'll be able to meet our student needs um with the staffing that we currently have. There there still are some more vacant positions that we certainly do plan um to fill. But she's, she felt comfortable being able to make those reductions, which is certainly contributing um to that small increase. As well as a significant reduction on Baton Kill's side of, you know, they used to have a full budget for their business office services. So um that in and of itself, I think, was about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that just, you know, is a is a negative on on their side.
So if I were trying to explain this budget as I'm looking at it right now, um Arlington and Sandgate are already rolled into the uh fiscal twenty-one number that we see there. Is that, am I correct with that?
Yes. But just just the SU portion, though, I don't, I don't wanna mislead anybody and think that Arlington, like the school district budgets are part, just just the portions of the SU um that will be coming into our SU that we're absorbing.
So, so um when does the other shoe drop? There's gotta be some surprise out there.
Well, Dick, just to clarify, the with Arlington, you know, with the BBSU coming in with the Renee, what did you say, two hundred thousand dollar anticipated reduction in the budget? And then SBSU is about a three hundred thousand dollar increase. So if it was SBSU budget being presented on its own, you'd be seeing both.
Yeah, about three hundred and forty thousand dollar increase or about a one point two four percent increase. So still not, not nearly, you know, what we have seen in the past.
Still on the low side compared to previous years.
Yes, absolutely.
Best because of the changes in special education.
Yeah, cause it looks like your budget from last year was an eight and a half in the budget document that you sent to me. Renee, is that correct?
Yeah, and and a lot of that, a significant portion of that was just the uncertainty as to what was going to happen with the health insurance for all of our support staff. Yeah.
Okay.
We have about a hundred and sixty-five paraeducators and had they all decided to opt for a family plan this year. We were, you know, just trying to weigh, you know, looking at, you know, different sectors of um and I actually had polled some of my um fellow business managers throughout the state who offered um, you know, every level of benefit uh to their support staff, tried to model that. And then, you know, the board kind of landed on a number which we thought was definitely gonna cover it. Clearly, we covered it, seeing as how only about a dozen people um increased their benefits, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I mean, that that is definitely a big part of it, Dick, though, is that we had, you know, we had hundreds of thousands of dollars that we added just as the, you know, what if? You know, we had seventy-five people jump onto a employee plus spouse or employee plus children plan.
Well, I remember all that. I just uh we wanna get caught them to reassess or anything stupid like that. So I remember it. I just uh I don't know that the simple, the simple mind that I have says you add somebody to up to who we already are and it's gonna cost us more and actually it's negligible, so.
I think that we were, we were hoping that that was gonna be the case, right? I mean, but but as we, you know, we're looking at this as kind of another year of transition. So we'll have to see how things go and if we find that um, you know, my my staff or um, you know, special education or whether it's HR or administration, like we just don't have the staff to actually support the actual processes that we have um and that we're responsible for. You know, things may look a little bit different when we come back to you next year with the twenty-three budget. Um but I think all of the administrators that contributed to this budget um, you know, feel comfortable with with where we are.
Thank you.
Sure. So then if we um flip to the next section, so essentially this is the same information, but I just have it divided into uh what we refer to as functions um in my office, but you can think of it as a department or specialty. Um so the first four digits you see on each of these lines is what the function code is. Some of these are um slight adjustments from what you would have seen last year. And again, that's because of uh that new uniform chart of accounts that um the state has rolled out. And and we're still trying to do our best with making sure that we're coding things correctly. Um so you'll see as we get a little bit further down through here, um we are making some flip flops to to get things where the state wants them. So the first uh, the first section here uh on the narrative is just kind of a reiteration of some items that you're gonna see that are um impacting most of the functions that we'll be looking at through this version of um of the budget. So when we get to um eleven oh one, direct ins- direct instruction, this I believe used to be coded just eleven hundred, maybe even one thousand. Um so this is going to include our ju- ed- educational support personnel. So essentially, that's all of our our, what we consider local paras. They used to be included in the the local budget, so they were, you know, in in the panel budget. They were in the Shafter's budget, they were in the Mount Anthony budget. But then the board um a couple of years ago wanted to move all of those paraeducators to the SU. So because they're not special education, para-professionals, we track them um and code their salaries and benefits separately as direct instructions. So we, you know, remain or retain their their label of um local education or non-special education. So that's what's in this category. So again, because we don't have collective bargaining um set for FY twenty-two, we do have factors. And again, you'll see that throughout. It's just general salary and benefits adjustments based on, you know, what-if scenarios with those negotiations that'll be um occurring over the next few months. Uh, we did end up again uh with the UCOA or Uniform Chart of Accounts um implementation. I moved one of our teachers or a portion of one of our teachers who is a mentor teacher for pre-K. Um that is actually coded, as you can see here, to a twenty-two nineteen, so that's improvement of instruction. So we'll see that a little bit further down. That's why we're not seeing such a significant, you know, if you would think, you know, two, three, four percent increase um just for salaries and benefits. That's why it's not quite at that level. The ELL level, however, um we did actually uh um put a small increase for the contracted service for um the translation services that we need for some of the materials. So we have those available to our families um who are not English speaking. Um special education is our next category, so twelve hundred, twelve oh one. Again, this is just a compilation that, you know, what we've seen from the others. So it's, you know, taking every budget category that we had in the previous version and then taking any, any one of those categories that's applicable to the twelve oh one special education. Um and that's what we're seeing. So this is, you know, including salaries, benefits, contracted services, tuition, equipment, and so on and so forth. Uh the twenty-one ten attendance and social work services, we do have um some support staff um that are now coded to that function, so um no real changes there, just uh salaries and benefits adjustment. Uh twenty-one thirty-one, uh I will fess up that I had this as singular. There's actually two special education ner- nurses. Um so I will revise this and get um the corrected draft up on the website as well. But I just wanted to point out that that is plural. Um, we move to twenty-one thirty-five, mental health services. So a pretty, pretty significant jump here, but this is uh basically, again, for contracted services um through United Counseling um to make sure that we are providing our students um with the supports that they need. So that's um mainly contracted service there, as well as the next line in psychology as well for um some clinical evaluations that um are very possibly needed next year. The other thing to note too is in in these um couple of lines here, we, we have had a difficulty filling our school psychologist positions. And we found that um we absolutely need to be pro- providing these services to our students. So in some cases, we've had to revert to reaching out to a contracted service, which comes with a a premium. So in the event that we're unable to fill the vacant um psychologist positions that we have, um we may be able to use some of those funds that we have set aside for clinical evaluations um to pay for that premium that we would see with those contracted services. But they essentially, it's either we're gonna contract for it um or we're gonna hire for it one way or the other. Um, the next category down, hearing impaired services, um this is uh coming from Arlington. So uh Bill, I'm not sure if there's anything you wanna mention there, but I I did note that we had uh um an increase at like at the pre-K level, so that's why I have that noted there in the narrative.
Yeah, we just had some children with us um hearing needs move in um that we have to service.
Didn't mean to jump ahead there. Um, so our speech and language category there, so that's just a general salary and benefits adjustments based on um the employees that we currently have. Audiology looks a little bit funny, and that's mainly because we pay for these services out of um Medicaid or IDA funding. Um but we did have some equipment repair that we actually ended up paying out of um the local special education fund. So that's why there's just that four hundred and seventy dollars sitting out there as an actual cost in FY twenty. Um occupational therapy, physical therapy, um not, you know, anything earth-shattering there. But we did have a an occupational therapist who had requested a reduction in their um in their FTE voluntarily. Um that employee had been in the position for a couple of years, so instead of continuing to budget for it at a one point O, um it did reduce. That employee has since been um reassigned. And um ideally, the physician would remain at a one point O, so I did go ahead and and bump that back up um to a full one point O position. Um, physical therapy, again, just general salary and benefits adjustments with a small increase for travel because they are um bouncing around to a number of different uh locations. Visual services, level funded. The twenty-one ninety group um is another one that um is Arlington-driven. And I don't wanna speak for Bill, but I'm pretty sure it's behavior interventionist. I don't know if there's any interpreters in there as well or if it's strictly behavior intervention, but we were moving um one behavior interventionist to Arlington, but then also keeping some contracted services there as well.
You are correct, Renee.
Okay, good. Um curriculum, this is again salaries and benefits. Staff training, as you can see, um lots of zeros there. This is a new category from the Uniform Chart of Account. So we did correctly start applying some of our expenses there um this past year. We do need to take a a deeper dive into our budgets to to move them appropriately. But essentially what happens is, you know, it it's maybe grouped in um with a contracted service and another function. So we end up doing budget transfers through the course of the year to get them, get the actual expense coded properly on our books. So we'll continue to update that and when we can identify um, you know, those costs, we'll we'll certainly uh recategorize them, reclassify them to the appropriate um budget lines. And I'm a little ahead of myself there. So twenty-two nineteen, that function, uh what I mentioned before, this is for um the mentor teacher that we have in pre-K. So that's just a re-categorization of salaries and benefits um from what was the eleven oh one, bringing that that down to the twenty-two nineteen. Excuse me.
Was it um last year, Renee, there's a, there's a four thousand in there? Was that because it was um budgeted partially for um another category? Is that what you're?
Uh, we had, um, I think this a a portion of their health insurance actually got coded to the correct line. You can see all the expenses have made their way there, but just in the current year's budget, we didn't pull everything out of the eleven oh one. It was only the um the out-of-pocket expense for health insurance. It was only the um the out-of-pocket expense for health insurance made its way um to the new category. So I made a point this year of um going and identifying the employee and and grabbing the salary and all the other associated benefits with it as well. So I know it looks like eh, you know, a sizable increase, but it really is a a portion of um one one position. I think it's a point eight um that we have budgeted for mentor teaching. Um, so technology services and technology administration, which is further down, we kinda have to look at those. Hand in hand. Um, we have had some reclassification of some software. And in doing so, um, there's a factor. Um, that I think is in agreement with North Bennington of dividing up administrative costs, but. Um, because North Bennington being non-operating, they 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 don't receive technology services. But they do benefit, you know, from Infinite Campus and things of that nature. Um, you know, a a bigger, broader category. So. And reclassifying, reclassif- let me try that again, reclassifying. Um, is some of those software costs to the services. It's pulled it out of admin um and just correcting it to where it should be in in the tech services category. So along with it is some some salary and benefits and you'll see um a small reduction in the in the tech admin line when we get down there. But some other things that are driving that, um, you know, the software. Um, Frank um wants to start a phased replacement of technology access points. Um, and then the, as I mentioned, the the software that we reclassified from um tech admin. Because it really is a service um for the students in the operating districts who are being transported.
Is is that accent's point? Uh, does that refer to um um hardware?
Frank might have to speak um more to exactly what that is. I know, I think it's some equipment. But also I don't know if it's um upgrading wiring um and even adding more just so to to improve. Um, everybody's capabilities to connect, but I'll shut up and let Frank talk.
Yeah, and the short, short version is, Dick, that's um uh Wi-Fi. And upgrading the the Wi-Fi type, the type of access points that we have now. To um handle all of the traffic that we're seeing with um with the increase and um. And using um broadband for, you know, for teaching much more uh robustly than we have been in the in the past.
Got it.
I mistakenly have uh labeled the next category. Board of Education and Audit, and that's a leftover, oops. From uh last year. Um, you can see we have a new function code for audit, so that got pulled out. I, again, I will correct this, um, the spreadsheet and and get a revised draft one up. Um, just so the the labels are aligning correctly. Uh, but the only increases that we're anticipating are this is where uh the V S V A fees are. And that is the increase that we're um projecting there. Uh, uh, the treasure salary um and benefits, typically we budget a a three percent. Um, for that. And then the audit, we are anticipating that being level funded. Small adjustment for legal, um, due to B V S U coming under the S U. Administration, um, this is, you're seeing a reduction there, but again, this is um because of the transitioning of services. So a reduction um at the B V S U level, you know, them coming under the existing S U. Uh, in addition to uh what's eh what's aiding in that reduction there is. Um, the elimination of the receptionist position at the central office. Um, last year, we we came to the S U board and asked if we could um add a split. H R slash finance clerk, um, which currently is being paid for by the B V S U. Um, we're kind of like doing a contracted service because we're um providing payroll and some other business office supports now. So we we brought that position um into, you'll see the finance and H R budgets, but um the receptionist position was reduced. However, that clerk is sitting at the front desk, kind of pulling double and triple duty. Um, and then, of course, the the increase for the trainings, mainly thinking about, you know, the equity uh trainings that. You know, the administration um could possibly benefit from. Your special education and early education administration, those increases are basically a combination of um. But potential salary and then, of course, the the health insurance benefit changes um that we're anticipating from V I. When we get down to finance, you can see a significant reduction. Again, this is uh mainly because of the cost. That B V S U would have carried in. We've been able to wipe that out because we're hoping. Um, with the additional staff that we have split between finance and H R. Um, we'll be able to accommodate, you know, the additional uh accounts payable work and reporting. Um, bank reconciliations, things of long, along those lines, but um at least on the Baton Hill Valley side, we were able to. You know, eliminate all of those central office costs that should have faded with finance. Um, H R, however, we kinda need to look at those collectively because we do work so closely together. So, you know, the reduction of um finance and and that function, but um there wasn't necessarily. Um, H R costs broken out at the B V S U level. So um what you're seeing here is. Um, general salary and benefit increases, but also um the portion, the half portion of that new clerk as well. Uh, tech admin is the next one. So again, this is the one I said we kinda need to look at with the tech services. Um, some salary and benefits planned adjustments to your, the tech admin team. Um, and then I did wanna point out, I did need to make a correction, so this did say from. Um, in the uh version that I sent out earlier, but that transportation routing software. Has actually been relocated to the tech services, which is um aiding in that reduction that we're seeing in that budget line there. Building ops, um, you know, some small utility and in-service um adjustments there. Um. Mainly cleaning, you know, pest control, trash, those that those have um been increasing. Our grounds maintenance, that is for something, standing, plowing, mowing, um, we're level funding that. Uh, level funding the safety and security stipend. So this is for our safety and security, um. Um, what is, I don't know if we call him a coordinator, but it's a stipend that we pay um to our safety coordinator for the S U. And on the transportation, this is actually where we're seeing kind of the 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 due-for contract. Rolled in with the, some of the S U costs from Baton Hill. So. Normally, the S U, we we would only be seeing contracted service, but this is combining your salaries, your benefits. Um, et cetera, of your your bus drivers along with that. So even though we're anticipating a two-point six percent increase in the contract. Um, offsetting costs and um potential reductions that Bill. Might have made in in the B, on the B V S U side. So with that. Um. My staff are currently um, you know, working on offsetting revenues. And um which we will then, of course, use to calculate the assessments. We are supposed to be receiving um eh estimated special education reimbursements from the agency, hopefully this week. Um, and then we're also finally being able to um work on the fund balances because we received our final. Um, FY twenty special education payment last week as well. So with that, um, we'll roll those together and start working those assessments in, um. I haven't looked um into see the the progress yet because I know it is definitely a work in progress, but given. When COVID hit and we kind of shut things down in March, we really curbed a lot of our spending. So I'm hoping that we're gonna see some pretty healthy fund balances to even offset, you know, the costs that we're projecting. Um, for FY twenty-two. But we will know more um as my my staff continues to work through those those numbers.
You still, you still have some um work to refine this and uh.
I think for for this, though, Dick, the only thing that I I think I would wanna do is maybe just take another pass through. Um, the benefits elections. I think there have been some changes, like I know. Um, in H R that somebody is um planning to drop their plan at the end of this month. So that's uh potentially another, you know, ten thousand dollars that I could sneak out of this this budget here. So maybe a couple minor tweaks, um but I wouldn't see any significant shift one way or the other. At this point.
And then revenue still has to be considered, I guess.
Yeah, so really, the only, the revenues that we would be um looking at would be the fund balances and then what we have coming in for special education. All the other revenue is essentially coming in from the districts via those assessments. So. Once we take off what we know we're gonna be getting from the state also for uh transportation as well, I guess I should say. Um. I'm I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful that we're gonna have some healthy fund balances to help offset. So I'm happy to. Yeah, I'm happy to answer questions. I know this is a lot of information to digest.
I don't see any out there, Renee. I think you're getting off easy this time. Um, so you, we can't do anything more than wait till your next round on the budget.
Ray has got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ray.
Uh, it's more a uh request that ultimately you. Um, I'd I'd like kind of an overview of, th- there's gotta be some personnel changes or losses or. Reduction due to this integration, because you've mentioned in a number of cases, uh B V S U's. Budget, uh, since it goes away, hasn't been replaced, obviously, with this, to the same level. Cause it's actually dragging figures down a little bit in certain cases. So, um. Bill told me how many people he had, they were coming over, but that didn't tell me what the total universe was. So I I think it behooves us to at least have an understanding of. Of what uh the net impact of this transition is going to be. In terms of the number of people we employ. Uh, for the S U and for special education services. Thanks.
Any other questions for Renee? I guess we'll wait for your next addition on that one. Renee, um.
Renee, I just wanted to say, I'm sorry, just to thank you for the amount of detail and the information that you give and explaining. The different categories. It's incredibly helpful for somebody, certainly for somebody new coming in to understanding your budget. I. And I know it's a lot of work to put it together. So thank you for for the notes.
You're welcome. And thank you.
On the other, they need with Renee to principals who will walk one through meetings with her to. Allow her to build this budget. So it's a lot of work from everyone, so, and we're not done.
Yeah, I I think that's agreed. Uh, the format we have now is. In some ways, the line items are so bulbous, you might say. You don't have the details, so at at least the notes. Help you to understand some of what's going in there. We used to have pages and pages of. Yeah. Into uh down to the level of categories of of employees and their salaries and benefits. Which was a little too much. This, to me, is a little, which is not Renee's fault. This is basically the state's doing. With the Uniform Chart of Accounts. Uh, the way they've changed it up is it's uh almost too little detail, so it's uh very helpful to have these notes. And I know she works incredibly hard on this, as everyone else has who's participated in meetings. Could come up with the numbers for their particular department or uh daily with. Thank you.
And I just, I I tried to get it into a format that's somewhat digestible because we're taking literally thousands. Of budget lines and, you know, trying to compress them in something that's a little bit more manageable, you know, for you folks that. That don't look at it every day like we do, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to Arlington and Sandgate for uh plugging in some figures to help us. I guess I keep looking at that concept and thinking that you can't add it all together and come out less. And um seems to work in some places at least, and that's a good thing. So thank you to those folks. Um, we have to double back uh for consideration of um the Internal Finance Controls Document. And we would need a motion to um approve that.
So move.
We have a motion from Scott, and then, did I see a second?
That was Leon.
Second from Leon. Uh, okay.
Well, have discussion on it?
That's where we're going.
Okay.
So I'm asking for discussion on the internal financial controls.
I didn't see this memo. Can you summarize it quickly?
Are you on there, Renee?
Uh, she's muted.
I'm I'm here. I'm just, I can pull it up on the screen. Um, so this is the document that, basically, the templates provided. Um, by the the state auditors. And we go through this on an annual basis, you know, to to address the questions to. Illustrate, you know, the internal controls that we have and what we're aware of, what we're. Um, you know, able to identify who is responsible for what um throughout the S U. And then, um, you know, one item, you know, are we aware of any employees that, you know, participate in any organization as a vendor? Um, so we have the Shafsbury Maintenance Form and also provides um through his um. Company in the past, he has uh provided landscaping services. Um, we're actually transitioning that um away from. The contracted service and trying to expand our current staff that we have at the elementary level um to be able to accommodate that. Um, but it's still, we're kind of having some growing pains. I'm not quite sure, you know, what we can handle with our staff and the vehicles and equipment we have. Um, so we're retaining um those services, at least for plowing and sanding um for this year.
Other questions?
Uh, so is are the uh, in in looking at the columns of yes and no's. Uh, would you, are there any um Xs that are in the wrong spot from your point of view? Or s- uh, columns that should have a no that don't have a yes instead?
No, it it's kind of odd because you would think that you'd rather see everything. Um, all one way or the other, but the way that they have the questions worded. Um, some of them, you would definitely want them to have, you know, no answers to, such as. You know, if you question, you know, lifestyle of, you know, people, you know, going beyond their normal income, no.
And uh who, you know, like, uh, who signs checks? You definitely want that to be not the same individual as the person who proves, you know, sexual and so on.
Yep.
I I was just scanning the no's to see what they were and it seemed like. I, I was just scanning the no's to see what they were, and it seemed like they were correct to me for financial control purposes.
Yeah, so here's like another one, did, you know, does the same individual who opens the mail actually deposit the checks, you know? We open it, we record it, and then the treasurers come take it.
Yep, yeah.
Great, great. Are there other questions concerning the financial control document? Seeing none, almost in favor of approving the, of accepting the documents, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
We have, I didn't catch how many we had. We had Ray, Scott, oh, we had Shayla, Nicole, and Leon.
Yep, I used a finger.
Okay, alright, um those opposed. Uh and I saw no abstentions. Motion carries, documents approved. Uh second item is the transportation contract renewal, which I think Renee already explained. Um is there a motion?
So move.
We have a motion from Leon and a second from Shayla. Um discussion? No questions, no further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the transportation contract renewal, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
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 Looks like we have a unanimous vote, I saw.
I abstained.
I'm, I'm sorry Nicole, yes?
I abstained.
Abstained?
Yep.
We have one abstention, Richard Nicole, and motion Scott. Do you have, no, and the motion carries. Are there other issues that you wish to bring before the board tonight?
Dick, I would just ask, like, I, I'm, I'm not sure if the board could um, you know, at this point, offer any direction or if there's something that they're looking um to see in this budget, or if you're okay with me just taking another pass through to do a double check. Um but then we would need to schedule another meeting date, and I don't know if it would be a date for us to actually vote. Um or if it would just be another review and then another subsequent meeting beyond that um for a vote.
As you know, the, the timeline that we're, we're looking at is early in January this year, because town meeting is.
I'll be there Sheila. I'm in my meeting still.
So, do we need the S U budget, uh you know the drill, is that before we can do the, yeah, you were right.
You were right.
I'm sorry about that.
But we know that Sheila knows you'll be right there.
I thought I was muted, I, I misread it, sorry.
It, it happens, um just ask our teachers and what they're, they see every day, so.
Yes.
So, um Renee and I talked about this earlier today, I think trying to squeeze a meeting in next week will not give her enough time to really look at this, and um Renee, that's what you said this afternoon, I don't know if you're still dealing with that, and plus we have the Union Elementary Board on Tuesday, so probably be the week of January fourth, we should look at a meeting to uh have Renee give one more uh pass at this budget and then a vote, so then we can apply it to everyone else's budget.
That's the first day back, right?
Well, I'm not saying the fourth, I said the week of the fourth.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that acceptable to the board? We could set a date now if you wanted to, um there's um, it's really, right now, there is we could do two, I, I prefer not to do the first day back, but maybe Tuesday, January fifth, there is no other meeting that night, I don't know how that works for everyone.
And we have no um, we have no um elementary meeting that.
That'll be the following week.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That's worked for me, others?
I'm fine if it's early enough, I have an appointment at seven, but I'm good earlier in the day.
Any other input on this?
Uh what about the same time as we did this, at six o'clock, is that okay?
Well, except that Shayla needs uh a little more leeway, did I hear that?
Yeah, that would, that would be backing me up.
Shayla usually wants the later time.
Yeah.
I know, it's time to actually have something later that day.
So is five o'clock agreeable to everyone?
That's fine.
That, that works for me.
Okay, that sounds like most of us are working on the fifth at five o'clock for the next meeting.
I, I wanna be clear about this, this is the only other meeting we're going to have on this budget is on, in January, early January?
No, you may decide that you need another one after that date.
Okay, after January.
Right, you may have, you may want a second meeting that week or the following week, um uh what I said, I, I don't believe you have a second pass that ready for next week, and then we're, we're into um the school vacation week, so.
Then the, the, um, yeah, alright, and the the revenue side of this will be presented at that time when, when this meeting occurs. Right? Or what you have, you, you should have that by.
We, yeah, I mean, we'll, we should have our best.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else to be considered? We'll warn that not just as a budget meeting, but as an, an, a full S V S U meeting, so if you do wanna take action that night, you can or you'll, or you decide to schedule another meeting.
You need it by, i- in order to warn it, you need it by when?
Where, our window is, all, all of our budgets, so our local budgets have to be warned either between January twenty first and January thirty first, which I think may both be pretty darn close to weekend. Um so that's really kind of backing us up pretty tight, so we've gotta, you know, get the S U squared away so we can, you know, finalize the assessments to get them into the S V U E S D.
The twenty first is a, is a Thursday and the thirty first is a Sunday, so you won't be meeting on the thirty first, but you could. But that's all budget, so we need the S U done, you know, as soon as possible.
Okay.
So that we can do M A U's budget, Arlington can do their budget, and uh we can do the Union Elementary Budget, set those once we have the assessment.
Well, the next meeting for the S U budget is January fifth at five. Other issues, anything else?
So Jim, did I understand correctly that your, the S V U S D is meeting next week? Are we going over the first version of this for that level? Or are we waiting for this to be finalized before we?
No, you'll, you'll get a version of your budget, yeah.
Okay.
Just like M A U is gonna get uh on Wednesday, they're gonna see a drafted their budget too.
But you threw out this Leon, you threw out the fact that you wanted to have a full board meeting, so you wanted to do finance first and slash uh the, a, a different time to say that the full board was gonna meet because different character of individuals will be showing up for the full board versus finding.
Tonight was warned as a full board meeting too, that's what allowed you to take the, the action on the bus contract. And um so I would suggest that you warn that as a full board meeting on January fifth too.
Okay.
Most of your members come anyways for the budget, so. Are we all set, any other questions, any other things for consideration? Shayla? Nope, okay, thought I saw the hand, uh then, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
We have a, uh we have a motion from Leon, a second from Shayla, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I've seen none opposed to that kind of thing, thank you folks, and thank you to Arlington and Sandgate.
Bye everybody.
Goodnight.